This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, I will. Mike Berginini?
Good evening.
Lloyd Colston?
Here.
Brandon Jellings?
Here.
Chris Johnson?
Here.
Dwayne Eastman? Cody Richardson?
Here.
And Dottie Smith?
Thank you. Please take a look at the minutes from July 9.
Move where you're further.
Second.
Okay, we shall have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on July's meeting minutes? All favor signified with aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we need to open a public hearing to the possibility of the only... We have a motion to open a public hearing.
We have opened a public hearing to discuss this law.
Can I second it?
Yeah, a little bit more here. All favor of a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
First of all, I'm going to apologize. I'm not going to be able to pull up very much on the screen. The website's not working today. But I will be able to pull up my presentation. So we can do that still for this part. So the proposed rezoning is from C3 General Commercial District to I-1 White Industrial District. And this is for the properties at 800 and 824 West Madison. There's been some places where 800 is shut up at 820. So if anybody ever saw that's confused, it's 800 is the vacant lot. And I'll show you that in a second. So this request is filed by Warren McLeod. Again, to rezon from C through to I-1. He's here tonight. So the subject property is again at 800 and 820. So it's these two properties here right at 8th and Madison. So the area around it is residential, commercial, industrial, it's a little bit of everything. This is about three quarters of an acre. So the project will utilize the existing building at 824. And they propose to expand into that 800 additional building for wood manufacturing. And part of what they do is the business is they produce those roll out billboards. That's all. Boardwalks and those related products or like beachfront and everything. And he can probably explain that a little more if we need to. So as far as the property is concerned, it actually had quite a bit going on there. The building was built according to county around 1920. And it had some additional improvements in 1986. In 86, it was rezoned. It wasn't industrial zoning at that time. And it was rezoned to a higher industrial zoning. That's really similar to what our I-1 district is today. Those were different back then, of course. And that proposed use at that time was the U.S. Armory. And in 2007, the alley was vacated because there was going to be a daycare in 824. And they were going to expand over to 800. That never happened. And because of that, that vacation was actually conditional. And the alley reverted back to being an open alley. And in 2014, yeah, 2014, this property was rezoned to C3 as part of our citywide rezoning. Because that it was an office building at that time and it just fit. But it has it has had that industrial zoning before. So comprehensive plan, so it is because of the zoning, it is slated as commercial as the future land use. So where do we need to go? So yeah, it is commercial. And it was commercial up till about 2022 or so. And well, it kind of still is at the moment. The properties to the south are industrial. The West Madison Avenue corridor is largely a mix of commercial and industrial. There is a goal in Chapter 4 of our plan to attract new industries and businesses to complement our economy. And of course, so we'll point that out. This expansion, he says, should add somewhere around three to five jobs to local economy. There's also a goal in Chapter 8 to provide adequate and appropriate areas of industrial land uses. And there's an action in there for industrial areas to have convenient access to highways and railroad facilities. Well, this is on Highway 166. So we're getting an industrial area near a highway for shipping purposes. So that's good for logistical reasons. As far as zoning, again, it's a mix of different uses. Is the intent of industrial districts survive for areas of light and heavy industrial uses? The I-1 district, which is what's being proposed, is for those a little bit lighter. They don't have as many effects that are felt off-site like smoke, always odor. The heavier ones, it is evident, a little more evident that their Creekstone, for example, is an I-2. You could definitely tell there's something going on there. There's more chances of loud noises and that sort of things. Generally speaking, this change in classification would be consistent with the intent of regulations. So this is the building at 824 today. This is the vacant lot. I say that today. This was actually from Google. And so it's about a year ago, but there's not much change to these properties in that time. Same thing here. Here's the Mexican restaurant over here. This is 7th Street. And this construction was for the habitat house that's there today. So there is a house just north of this proposed property. This is along 8th Street. There's, he owns this property too, where the campers are being stored. So this is looking west along Madison. Neil Construction has their activities over to the left side. And this is looking the other way. Pike is in the background, LG Pike. It's across the street. That is LG Pike Cross Street. Sorry. It's silly. So that's kind of shows you what the neighborhood is. So based on all that, staff recommends approval of this. The property again was previously industrial. Won't need any new infrastructure. It's already there. No, no utilities or anything like that. The property is located along the highway. So we don't have to worry about using impaired streets. It will add a small number of jobs, but it will add some jobs. And the negative impacts, what we hope to do is mitigate them with site design. One example I might say is we'll have them put up some sort of screening along that north property line. Because the house, it'd be required by zoning anyways. Beyond that, we will work through it more than a second. I don't, unless somebody has a concern that I didn't think about, I don't think there's going to be any major problems with that site. And I just put a picture up there of some of the stuff that they manufacture. But that was also in the package, so.
Anyone see if you have anything regarding this matter? Any discussion? Can I have a motion to come out of the public hearing?
Don't move.
I'll second. Make it easy for a secretary.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion not signify with aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So we've had a public hearing. Do we need a motion to pass this one? Or can I have a good?
Need a motion.
Yeah. No further discussion. Can I have a motion regarding the decision?
I think that we approve the zoning change request.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is this a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do it by roll call. If you're all ready. So Mike Berginini?
Aye.
Lloyd Colston?
Aye.
Brandon Jellings?
Aye.
Chris Johnson?
Aye.
Cody Richardson?
Aye.
And Dottie Smith?
Motion carries.
That was probably one of the easiest rezones we've ever done. Didn't take me at all.
But people were looking forward to it.
Well, you didn't ask any questions.
Well, Josh did a really good job explaining that.
Easy when it makes sense.
Yep. All information was here.
Well, I hope we are successful with it. It's pretty risky, but we're going to give it a shot and see what happens. I know we could do really, really well. We just did a job for the hotel in Saudi Arabia, so. I don't know. When we start promoting it, who knows what could happen. Thanks so much.
Very good.
Have a great night.
Next issue is discussion regarding billboard signs. What do you have for us, Josh?
I'm going to see one last time if it'll come up for me. No, it won't. I don't know what's going on. I've never had this before, so. I will still go through it. What I did for you planning commissioners, in fact, I have a couple of extra copies that'd be there if you want these. This is a one pager that just describes the proposed amendments. But I'm going to go through what I was thinking. Here it is. So of course, back in June, we had the public hearing regarding that billboard sign up by the Lee's House. And there was a lot of opposition to the sign. And so you planned, you tabled that request until July. And that way, we were able to get a little more public feedback. We got that. Most of the respondents requested that the request to be denied. And arguing that it was too large, it was not a great location for the billboard among other issues. And ultimately, you voted to recommend denial of that request based on some testimony. So one thing that we noted, and Jellings actually noted specifically in the meeting, that the sign met the current regulations. And so that is a signal to me that the regulations need to be changed. And so that's what what I'm attempting to do tonight. And so I've drafted some amendments. Both the feedback from that public hearing and from the little poll that we did indicated things like the height was too much, the size was too big. And also the location wasn't great either. It is important to note though, and this is one thing I wanted to point out, that these regulations aren't just the traditional billboard signs like what this one was. It also takes into consideration what we call off-premise signs. So we have a few places around town where a business has a sign on the business and it's not on their property. And so these kinds of signs fit into that category too. So so I put the definitions that are important to this in the packet. The definition of billboard is simply an off-premise sign. So then we have to refer to that definition of off-premise sign. And it is defined as a sign that draws attention to or communicates information about a business service, commodity, accommodation, blah, 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 that exists or is conducted on a location other than the premises in which the sign is located. So that's a lot of words even what I said, and it's a little longer. But it also is a sign that draws attention to a cause or advocates or proclaims a political, religious, or other non-commercial message. That can also be an off-premise sign. Unless it's excluded from regulations for a different. So without being defined, I would not recommend totally outlawing these kinds of signs. That that would be an issue, I think, because first of all, we have several. And we do have one actual, what we would probably call a billboard. It's a campaign. So we don't want to necessarily make those illegal either because they're pre-existing. And they wouldn't be illegal anyways. They would be legal not formally, formally, the grandfathered. But still, we have a precedent for it, so I don't want to do it. I also wanted to let you know about something else that's related to signs. And I'm going to go through these in a minute. But you might be aware of a controversy involving a certain sign at the library a couple of months ago. And we went through that as city staff and even the city commission and determined based on our current regulations that we cannot allow temporary signage on city property. Now, that is a that is a really strict enforcement of that. But based on that issue, we didn't know what else to do at the time. And so that's how we handled that. And so as part of that, we also reviewed the section concerning this kind of signage, temporary signage in our regulations. Well, we couldn't find anything that would really, we could really change to fix that situation. Staff met with the city attorney and everything. And we just couldn't find anything that would really fix the issue. And so we didn't actually, I'm not actually proposing those changes, but I wanted to let you know what was going on. There was one edit that I'm proposing that was in there that we just found regarding interior signage. And couldn't figure out what that really meant when we were going through it. And so I'm proposing just to remove that. So that'll be one of the first edits. And then on top of that, there was a little minor edit to municipal code that's going to refer back to the zoning regulations. It doesn't change much, but it's it's a precursor to what we might do in the future at the at the city commission. Just wanted to let you know that. Assuming, well, no, I'm just going to skip this part. Let's go right to the proposed amendment. So that first amendment, if you have that sheet or if you're looking at the packet either way, was in 27-301. And that is just, it says interior signs should be exempt from these regulations. We didn't know what that meant. You go to most businesses and they have signage on the interior of the building. We don't regulate that with zoning anyways. And if it's central to the site, we already have other things that would require it. So I don't know what it meant, what it was for. So we're just going to get rid of that. That is my proposal there. The other thing that's outside of this main section related to billboards, it was in the C2 sign regulations. And it basically spelled out that you could have a billboard in the C3 district. That doesn't make sense. Must have been in the C. That must have been a typo. Anyways, so I removed the language that says that the signage does not apply towards the maximum square footages. And we're going to put it into the billboard section instead. So basically, we don't want to
Eliminating that section.
Yeah, that paragraph. It's just a paragraph that's in there. And so that moves us on into 27-13, the actual billboard regulations that we were using when we were talking about that case. So that first section, 27-1301, basically tells tells you where signs are allowed. So they're allowed in the C3, which that sign was in, I-1 and I-2. But they have to have a conditional use permit in order to be permitted, which was what the process was that they were going through. I would be open to changing that section a little bit. I'm not sure exactly what to say there. Because I think it's probably more important that we look at the locate, the size is probably really what's more important and the height. So I didn't propose anything there other than I added that sentence to be in compliance with with KDA regulations. So if it's along one of their highways. But the applicant noted that one of the requirements that we were talking about wasn't actually a KDA requirement. But the point is, we want them to make, we want to make sure that they're also meeting those requirements. We don't want to be contradictory to what they're doing. So I just added that sentence in there. So the first big real change that I did was I removed this paragraph under location about being set back 50 feet. That's what we thought was a KDA regulation. It's not apparently. And so I'm proposing we just eliminate a setback requirement there. They can just meet the same setback that a regular sign. I'm sure there'll be setback a little bit from the road anyways. We don't require any setbacks for regular signage. They can be right on the property line. And so that that was my proposal for that. So the next section, maximum height, the original language was 50 feet, which was obviously an issue for the people that were being affected by it and the community as a whole. And so what I proposed was cutting that in half to 25. And the reason I picked 25 is because that is the that's the maximum height allowed in the C3 district for on-premises. So we didn't, we don't really want to be stricter than those. That doesn't really make sense. So that would be a reduction there. The next section was about sign area 1304. So the the original language called for allowing up to 750 square feet. That proposal was for 600. And so it was under that number, but that's still large. And so what I proposed is that we cut that 600 request in half and to make it 300. Now, remember, based on the next paragraph, that that is both sides. So if you have a two-sided billboard or off-premise sign, it can only be 150 square feet on each side.
Including V-shaped?
Yes. Yeah, based on regulations. So if they're if they're wanting to do a large, or not a, well, you know what I mean? If they're wanting to do this construction like that, like what that one is proposed, then they would be limited to that 150 per side. And then this is the section that paragraph C that says billboard signs do not apply towards the maximum square footage for on-premises signage. I just felt that there makes more sense. Section 1305 was about lighting. Just kind of reworked that based on some other city regulations that I looked at. Just noting that any kind of lighting would have to be directed upwards. So it doesn't create any kind of hazard. We would use the same thing for regular sign, for on-premise signage too there. It can't cast a glare. I also put in a sentence, because that actually wasn't spelled out, that billboard signs containing digital graphics or electronic message centers are not permitted. So it would have to be just a static sign. And again, that was actually what that applicant was proposing. They wouldn't have that digital either. You've probably seen that if you go up into Wichita, they have some that are digital and they actually change. Based on what I was hearing, I don't think we really want that, that ability. If they want an electronic message center for an on-premise sign, we do allow that. So they could still. Finally, that last paragraph talks about minimum spacing. The current language allows billboard signs to be within 300 feet of each other on the same side of the street. So if you put one up, nobody could get a permit for one within 300 feet on that same side. And I was looking at some other regulations. We talked about location a little bit. And I felt that moving it up to about 800 is actually a little bit more conducive. That would further restrict the amount of places it could be. And it gets that much further. That's that's it. That's my proposal.
So with these proposals, could there be a billboard sign downtown?
Um, no, because of the zoning. Because it's C4 in the downtown area.
Josh, page 27 or 24. Is that remaining or not?
Page 27 or that's the one that I proposed they removed. And so I didn't properly re-letter those sections.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Looks like a simplification and clarity, and I think it's a good job of that. Anytime we can get rid of question or confusion as well.
I'm not being able to satisfy most of the questions that came from the public.
While not making it so restrictive that we're pushing reasonable requests out.
Is anyone here in the audience have anything to say?
We'll have to have a public hearing for this anyways. And what I started to say earlier, I'm not going to be able to be here for our regular scheduled October meeting. I am actually going to be at a planning conference in Arkansas that week. So I won't be available. And so I would propose that we, assuming everybody's okay with this, schedule a public hearing over this in November. He's gone with. So we're all going to go to Hawaii then?
No, just
Just to you, you heard what?
Condo costs me 31 bucks for two weeks. Be frank. Wow.
I bet Vicky and Charlie would love to go too. Maybe three.
They're shutting the office down.
We could declare a city holiday.
We don't necessarily have to do it in November either. If you feel more comfortable with moving that a little bit further, that's fun.
I don't think it's the crucial issue.
We need to do something about it, but it's not a tomorrow issue.
December is fine.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll just plan on December. I can't guarantee there won't be a meeting in November. There won't be in October. We already have passed that lines for that. So there could still be one in November if an application comes in. I can't guarantee what will happen. But we'll plan for this to be.
You said October.
We won't be having one in October.
Oh, okay.
We're just going to cancel the October meeting.
We don't. We'll see one in November, but we can't say it was.
I never want to promise that. I don't know what's going to come in. I do have, since they're talking anyways, I do have outstanding applications out. That happens all the time. So it's it's hard telling when I might come in. I don't foresee one coming anytime soon.
Okay. So since this is discussion, you don't need a motion.
No.
Is there anything else you have judged?
The one thing that I would strongly urge you to do as a group is see if we can't find some more planning commissioners from city limits. We still need, we still have two vacancies. Looking at some potential members out there right now. I mean, if you're interested, we are, we are, we are definitely needing those other two. That will help us with our sometimes core issue. If we have just the full
I am going to start coming to these meetings. So, because I'm playing catch-up with a lot of city business. And so I might be interested later on. And I'm, by the way, table secretary, my name is Vicki Jackson. Who did I? I'll be coming to, that's why I was asking. I'm just, I'm just here learning, listening.
Okay, gentlemen, do you have anything further?
I will make the same announcement I made last night. And that is Wednesday, that's tomorrow, is Patriot Day. And Patriot Day is an emotional day for many people. But last night I mentioned a man from Wales. He died on Thanksgiving Day in Georgia. He attended the University of Oklahoma. If you read the book, "We Were Soldiers Once and Young", the paperback has a picture of him carrying a N1 car being an elephant press in Vietnam. His name's Rick Raskorla. Rick Raskorla didn't have to do this. He was hired by He was hired by his company to do the safety and security for and war trade center, or his company. He was so adamant about his God that he purposely, at random, conducted drills and made people's lives miserable. Or he wants to do a fire, recruiter, flames in the buildings. And he got his people that had reported to work that day off the floor, down the stairs, out the building. And after he had done that, which was all he was obligated by his company to do, he went back in to recover some more people. And the buildings collapsed on him. That is what I remember on Wednesday, every, every day. Let's take time to be well prepared individually as that gentleman heard his company.
No further discussion, no further items, motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn to that door.
All second.
Of course, we have motion in the second, all in favor of signify with I?
Aye.
The home gentleman?